I'm calling to order the meeting of the Sunderland Elementary School Committee on January eleventh at six oh one P M. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes of November fourteenth and November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Four zero. Thank you. Financial statement.
All right. Uh, so warrants signed since the November meeting, uh, totaled one hundred fifty one thousand eight hundred forty one dollars and fifty nine cents, and there were twenty five warrants. Um, whoop, I have a typo in the order of twenty four, and it's, that was through December thirty first of twenty three, the expense reports I sent over. I'm like so honed in on some of this work. Um. I wanna go over a couple of things, just as a reminder, since we're like halfway through the year, I figure there's nothing new on here, there shouldn't be anything new that's showing overages, but I think it's a good point for us to kind of look at where we're at. Um, we still have about eight percent of the budget not encumbered, so we're in good shape. We're not in any risk of, you know, having a budget problem at this point. We've fully encumbered salaries, which is why we're only seeing eight percent at this point of the year because it accounts for all of those expenditures. Um, and one thing to keep in mind as you're looking through reports is that we're, we're a bottom line budget. So at the end of the year, as long as the budget is balanced, we're okay, even though you're seeing some negatives in some of the accounts. So I encourage you to look at subtotals as you go through this of a particular category, because there could be, you know, a thousand dollar overage in one line in a category and a thousand dollar savings in the same category. So while you're getting all of these line items, in the end, it, it usually works out in the wash for us. Um, but a couple of big things to note is you'll see that the IA line, um, which is under function code twenty three thirty, and that falls on page three of the report. On the budget, it's showing over, but if you look at the school choice report, there's money remaining in the school choice account. So one of the IAs is coded incorrectly, so I'll work with payroll to fix that. So we don't have an, uh, actual overage of IAs. I expect we'll probably actually have some savings because of unpaid absences. Um, similar things happening in the teacher line. There is a regular teacher line that has, uh, more money than it should. It has fifty three thousand, and then the special education teacher line is negative forty nine thousand. So again, those things are washing each other out. I'll have to work with payroll to get that swapped out. Um, some true overages in the budget that, that do include telephone and trash. You know, utilities is one of those things that fluctuates year to year. Uh, so those are actual overages in those accounts. I think we're doing okay in building general repairs, at least as of this report. I think if we fast forward a few more weeks, there have been some things that have taken place, but I think we're in an okay spot with that at this point. We're not, not in the red there yet, which is positive news. And we're having regular conversations about building facilities district wide and really keeping a close eye on things, because Sunderland's not the only one that's seeing challenges with general repairs budgets. There's a lot of things going on district wide and with inflation, labor rates are up, you know, cost of materials is high. So, you know, we're really keeping a close account of all of those pieces. So, um, that's all I have. I just wanted to open it so that if you all did have questions, you could ask them. You know, I hate to just keep saying there's no problems, no problems, and not at least talk a little bit about it, but. I don't have anything further on this year unless you have questions.
Is the McKinney vent of transportation situation ongoing?
Yeah, good question. So that family did move back to their hometown. Their house was rebuilt. And so we ended up spending fifteen thousand on transportation for that student.
All right.
Versus the anticipated thirty thousand.
Which is why you have the possibility of using some of that rural aid for next year.
Exactly.
I figured it must have, something must have happened. So you spent, you understand the fifteen K?
Correct.
And should there be a?
Probably not, um. That wasn't on line C cuts either, but it could be one of the things that's impacted, but, um.
Because of what the governor reduced some stuff.
Yeah, um, and I, I suppose we could submit for it and see if the town does get anything back out of it. Um, but we haven't been doing it in the past because the number's been so small. This year it was much more significant.
Okay.
When it comes time to do end of year reporting, I'll be sure to throw that on the end of year report because that's how it funnels through. The state looks at the end of year report, and then it gets submitted for reimbursement there if you're eligible.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Shelley? Thank you, Shelley. Uh, principal's report.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Uh, so for the report today, I sent it to everyone on Monday, I believe. Um, but the first thing I wanted to talk about is a grants update. Um, we, as you know, we applied for the cooler communities grant earlier in the year, and were awarded, uh, three thousand dollars to go towards our steam night event, which is happening in the last week of April. That, um, light is very focused on sustainability. And our library media specialist, Rachel Kidder, has been the driving force in, um, taking the lead role in this event. Um, Rachel and I met recently, and, uh, evening is going to showcase different, uh, sustainability concepts, including sustainable gardening, home energy, reducing U E, reuse such as clothing and recycled art, low carbon eating, climate change in farming, transportation, climate and mental health. Um, we are looking to have some outside vendors, um, from the community abroad to help support the evening. And then, uh, across all grade levels, students are going to have different projects related to one or more of those sustainability concepts. So it's really exciting. Um, Rachel has put a ton of work into that, and she's just really one of the gems, many, one of the many gems we have here on our staff at, at Sunderland. Uh, the other, um, grant is our Stars residency grant. So earlier this school year, we applied for and received funding, um, through the Stars residency grant program, through the Massachusetts Cultural Council. Um, these residencies aim to bring students, teachers, artists, scientists, and humanists together, um, in the spirit of creating rich cultural experiences. Uh, this year, we're going to welcome back talented mosaic artist, artist Cynthia Fisher. She's from Big Bang Mosaics, and, you know, if you walk in the main hallway by the, by the office, we have a wetlands mosaic. Um, and Cynthia did the work with our students on that as well. And, um, so this coming next week, actually, students across all grade levels are going to create a mural, mosaic mural with Ms. Fisher that celebrates the diversity found in our school community. Our goal is to have that, um, up and on display for our international night event, which is happening in the last week of January. And our teacher, Melissa Revelle, and Vicky Palmer, our school psychologist and counselor, helped to secure funding for this grant. Um, our new school adjustment counselor, Jillian Buck, has thrived in her short time here at Sunderland Elementary School. In addition to partnering with families and connecting with students and staff, she's focused on the overall, uh, health and wellbeing of our school community. And prior to the December break, uh, she along with Vicky helped to plan a fun, a fun week for staff and students. And one of the fun days for students was they had to find, uh, gingerbread people hidden throughout the school. And if each class, the classes that found three gingerbreads were awarded a games outside with me and hot chocolate. And I'm happy to report that all classes. Um, we didn't want to hear her feelings, so plenty out there. Uh, so Community Connections, led by Mr. Max Sherrill. The Frontier Regional Band came to S E S and rocked out the gymnasium for students and staff. That happened before winter break. Um, I mentioned this before, our international night celebration is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty fifth. It kicks off at five P M. with a wonderful potluck dinner, and we'll have some, um, pizza on hand as well as, as fillers. Uh, families are encouraged to bring dishes that, uh, celebrate their, um, their backgrounds. And this is being organized by Vicky Palmer. Uh, she's really taken the lead role in this event over the years. Additionally, a new feature this year, our music teacher, Susan Matsui, who, um, and I wanna, I mentioned her a, a little bit as well. Um, she lived in Japan for a number of years and has created numerous children's books in Japanese. So she's going to have a couple readings of one of the books that she wrote, and so that's going to be a new feature. Uh, we have a musical guest, Rick Marshall, who will showcase instruments from around the world. Um. Sumatsuri also is the strings teacher over at Frontier. And while we were looking for to fill that strings vacancy, she served as the longtime strings substitute here at Sunderland. And that transition happened on Monday. We have a new strings teacher, Mia Friedman, and, um, connected with the kids immediately. Uh, my own daughter in Deerfield is in third grade, um, has had a couple lessons with her, and, um, she just has demonstrated a great rapport with the students. So, uh, and finally, uh, Happy Trails, Ms. Flora Cox. Our deputy blonde teacher kindergarten instructional assistant, Flora Cox, recently retired at the beginning of January. Flora began her career at Sunderland Elementary School during the two thousand five, two thousand six school year. Uh, while at S E S, Flora has supported countless number of students with a loving approach. Uh, she has always had a deep love for gardening and has really been instrumental in helping to create our beautiful vegetable garden out back. And we have the stock tank planters on our new playground out front, and she has really been the driving force behind keeping those going. So we thank Flora for her time and wish her the best. Any questions?
Thanks to every single individual you mentioned. All right, thank you, Ben. Uh, is there any public comment? We don't have any members of pub, of the public in person. Anybody online like to speak? All right. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. We have to vote policies, A A, A A dash one, A C A, B G F, and C H C A. Can you have a motion?
A motion.
I'll second. What questions do we have?
I have a general question. The way these are presented is changed because my recollection before, uh, when we were dealing with policies was that the change would be in red or something like that, so you could see what was, what was and now what will be. Um, obviously, that's not the case in any of this.
Should be. It should be. If yours is gonna get in red, I can get you to your in red.
It's in black and white.
It's all black and white, and, I mean, the red had.
I have a copy. It's in red, so.
Something was, you know, if it'd be something added, it was in red, and if there was something that was leaving, it was like had, you know, lines to it or something.
I'll jam it, send it, redo it, because we, we have it in red.
Okay.
Because that's how, that's how, that's how the committee went through it, was it in red? So I, my assumption is yours was in red. So, um, I'll get that out to you. I'll get it out to you after this, so you'll have it for the next meeting, real estate changes.
Would you like to table this for tonight until we can see the changes clearly?
I actually think of the way, it, it, it's not gonna take long regardless, and we're just, so that we got a chance, but, because I read through the things, I think. You know, at certain point, I got sort of like hold it sometimes.
The, the ones tonight, I can kind of go through, and I can even tell you what the changes.
I don't think, I mean, I think it'd be so, I think most of that's so obvious, so we don't need to.
The ones that are not significant, there was just legal language.
We could, we could just do them part, part of the group next meeting then. If they can send them as part of that package, just.
Okay.
All with the, with the red in, then it would be great.
I'll make a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
Last second.
All in favor? Four zero?
Okay, hang on, I gotta catch up here.
Yep.
Motion from Jessica, seconded by, and, and the original motion to approve was.
Um, similarly, voting to remove B K. If it's a single policy, do you want to just explain it to us?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're just removing it, obviously, it just, um, there's no significance to having that policy. There may have been.
And in all the cases in general, down in the, in the whole new set of policies where they're removing ones, it's just, this was, we had a subcommittee that worked on these, and they, there was no reason to have that policy, was the conclusion.
Correct, so, yeah, and, um, going into those, the newer ones, the, so we go, we're going through every section, every single policy. So, um, as we go through, we're also comparing our policy handbook to the M A S C policy handbook. So there, they went through, and then they gave us all the changes, then we're going through, looking at where the changes are, and then looking at our own policy handbook to, to see which ones, if we have policies they do and don't have. Um, so we're adding ones that they have that we don't have, so much are, as you know, somewhere, I want to say surprising in the sense of like, we, like, uh, suspending our policy, it's something we, I kind of assumed we had. At some point, our pol, our, their master copied is not like ours. So we're getting those up, and then if they have, they don't have it, we have it, we look through to see why, and if it's still relevant. There are a few that are, are still on, but there are many that are just, um, are being taken care of by either other policies, where they're not saying anything that is necessary to have a policy on, um, such as B K. You know, the community may maintain membership of national, state, and regional school committees, boards, associates, and may take active part in activities in these groups. You don't need a policy on that. It's just another page in a book where you, you know, at some point maybe before, you know, the ed reform of ninety three, was there, was there a reason for it, and I don't know why, but honestly, somebody's gonna go back this far. Um, so. That's why you'll hear other ones where it's like, we're not matching their, their book. We want to get as close to their book as possible, only for ease for us, so when they do changes, you know, that kind of thing. As long as it doesn't change what we want for outcomes in our policies. You know, especially something like this where it's like, let's say this was our, but we wanted this policy, we don't need to rewrite it. It's, it's straightforward. It's, you know, it's, that's what. There are some policies we tweak, you know, that, um, we want our own kind of flavor to, but the majority of them are more and more just the law being translated to policy.
No, I think it's great you had a subcommittee go through this, because it's reassuring. You know, that, yeah, not only, it's not just you saying, yeah, we gotta do this, but it's you and a group of fellow school committee votes that are agreeing that, yeah, this is what we need to do.
That's all, Megan.
It's been a while, it's afternoon, leaving these suckers. I wonder what Jay's here.
Sorry about that.
No prob, no problem.
And some were so minor that if you have the red, if you had the red, you would have, you would have taken it half the time. Because like the adding of like, maybe if you like, a particular group was not, you know, if there's a, you know, make sure we weren't discriminating against a particular group, and they added a group by law. We said that's significant enough that has to vote before the committee, because we're talking, you know, we don't just assume you add groups, you, you know, it's, you must make a statement when you add groups. Um, so when you look through it, you'll be kind of like, uh, really.
Would you attend the motion to vote on removing B K?
I would.
I'd move that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Four zero, we're removing B K. Darius, for, for getting the, uh, a revised version of these, um, policies to consider, could, we also haven't clearly labeled which ones are to be removed? Thanks. All right, moving on, superintendency agreements. We are voting tonight. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Last second.
And discussion?
I'm assuming the experience from your end as far as dealing with, just, you know, your situation here was seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think the, um, I think we get to try it out, which I think is kind of neat. You know what I mean, like, you know, usually, and so people get seen, you could see how it would work. Um, and I think it, maybe, even since last night, the, uh, Frontiers meeting or the other night, Frontier meeting, that, you know, maybe it'd take a moment longer, but you could spend twice as much if you don't have a, you know, even in, in a smooth transit, uh, transition or discussion. Um, it was very clear about how it worked, and I don't know, I don't think it worked.
I think it's really admirable that you basically started this whole process to come up with this and got, you know, pushed it all the way through and so on, and now we've got this because, you know, that's not a simple thing, and, and I think that, uh, you know, you need to be congratulated for, for getting this something now, but, uh, hopefully only have to use it when we're all in agreement, you know, and it's simple, but if we do run into a case some point down the road when it's not simple, they're sure to be glad they got it. So thank you.
Um, when it's been, assuming it gets approved by all five committees, um, will a copy be put in the town archive?
I guess so, sure.
Previously existing one had been in the town archive, right?
Oh, that's, yeah, for the regional agreement, you're saying?
Yeah.
It's a good idea, I didn't think about that. I'll do it.
Great. Got two more, like, little detail questions that are just from my understanding going forward. Um, so this, this agreement says unapproved minutes from the subcommittee of chairs will get distributed to all school committees prior to being approved by that subcommittee. So if the subcommittee clerk sends unapproved minutes out to all the school committees, as this says, do questions get directed to your own school committee chair or to the person who wrote the minutes? Or do we figure that out later?
I suppose it would go to the person, the first time, the first one I questioned would be the person who wrote the minutes, to make sure it's not an issue of, depending on what the question is. And then, um, I suppose it would be then brought to everyone. It wouldn't just be that chair, because it's the bodies and then it's not just the person who represents that body's minutes.
Yeah.
So I think it'd go to the, with the note takers, and then.
Okay.
Would be how I would guess that.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I've got no prior reference for. And then also, it sounds, just want to confirm my understanding of this, uh, policy is that there could never be an emergency meeting of the, of the subcommittee. Because it says that there's no exception for an emergency meeting. It says they must, all subcommittee meetings must be posted at least forty eight hours in advance. Is there a reason that there's no emergency clause?
All right, that's run by Ross.
I'm okay with approving it without that.
Okay.
It does say we're gonna revise it every two years.
Yeah, and it might be that the we're wondering that, like, our own rules for school committees, that the rule is that you have to post forty eight hours in advance. I mean, there is a emergency clause, and it has to fit the law standard of what it constitutes an emergency. So. Yeah. I'm trying to think what would constitute emergency and that kind of thing. In that case, you would do it and then be in trouble for not following your policy. You know what I mean? It'd be such an emergency if you had to have a meeting that to discuss a position of somebody without doing forty eight hours notice. There would have to be something really bad going on.
Yeah.
A really, really positive, like, you had to get the nomination for superintendent of the year in by Friday.
We got a million dollar grant, but we have to approve it within twenty four hours.
I'll ask, I'll ask.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, how many of the committees have approved this so far?
It's the January agenda and your meeting number two.
Your meeting number two. So, do the rest of the committees have meetings next week?
Two weeks, next two weeks.
We have next, we have two next week and one the following week.
And then we're likely to schedule the annual subcommittee meeting. It says there's an annual meeting of the subcommittee.
We already had it. Oh, oh, for the chairs, you're saying?
For the chairs.
Um, yeah.
It's what the policy says.
Right, yep.
I've got a bunch of things I'd like to discuss.
Yeah. You know, it might be, uh, timing wise, it may also be, um, the administration has ideas that wants to do for the joint meeting, and it might be to do a meeting of that and talk a little bit about how to set that up, because you have a joint meeting in April.
Okay.
I don't have to push it off, I'm just saying that we've been talking about some ideas about long-term strategic planning for the district and how to approach that. I'm not sure if you, I mean, it should be a chair's talking about it, it could be usually part of that group. I don't know, all right. We'll talk.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion?
Right.
We have a motion to approve the superintendency agreement. All in favor?
All right.
Yes, four zero. Great, moving on to new business, the equity plan.
Equity plan. So I'm putting, it was sent out to everybody, but I'm also putting it on the screen. So, um, we've created the equity plan, remind notes here. Um, and to kind of talk about how it all kind of fits together, um, I think it's best the, the map, or I guess the, um, we'll call this the different plans within our district. I wanted to share this kind of slide. Or, and you've seen it on your thing as well, but when we're talking about how the equity plan and how it works and how it fits in with all of our other planning, this really, we put this kind of together, it helped me out a great deal. I was like joking the other night, I'll, just like the, just like the plan you just approved, when you have it spelled out with how it kind of flows, um, it makes it a lot more clear. Um, but, could we always talk about these different plans? We have professional development plan, assessment plan, curriculum plan, and now we have an equity plan. And in the equity plan, when we're talking about things, we're talking, we're discussing those other plans, and about how, um, equity work falls into those plans before going into our strategic plan. And in the, in the blue plans, those are pretty static. I'm not saying they can't change, but you're not changing those year to year. So again, the, the curriculum plan, the professional development plan, the assessment plan, and equity plan, it's like, those are like how we are doing our planning. Okay, and then those feed into our strategic plan, which has goals. Um, it is due next year to be updated, um, in usually three to five years. And then after that, we have our, what you would call your annual plans, which is your P D plan, your school improvement plans, and the equity action steps. Um, and that is, that's our brand new thing, equity action steps, so that, we're gonna see that evolve as we start to use it, but that was that colorful graph. And we showed that all, the list of all the different things, recommendations, and then some, um, that could actually see outcomes, and you could see for the years out. So that was that, that's the equity action plan. So I kind of wanted to just explain that like there, because it does get confusing when you start talking about all these different plans and what do they mean and so forth. Okay? Um, and I do have Laura here, Rachel decided, um, to come join us on and be able to chip in, because she is the one of the main architects behind this. Her and Sarah did the, the lion's share of the work. Um, and so, if you guys do have questions, I am willing to defer to her. But with, so within our equity plan, you know, um, we did talk about the different things that make it up. Um, basically about design requirements, delivery and consistency of equity work in our district, how we're gonna look at data and program evaluation through the equity lens, um, how we're gonna monitor our equity plan, and then communication for supports and consistency. So that's kind of the breakdown of, um, the equity plan. Um, I'm sure, kind of going through, so, um, and I'm not gonna read it to you, kind of, you know, and the, overall, that's the, the focus of it. Is it brings structure to the work that we're already doing. Kind of, we're kind of building it backwards. Um, and I really did want to thank Laura and Sarah, they do, there's not, we're on the front curve of this in the sense of, there was not a lot of exemplars to pull from. Um, we really kind of, uh, are building this kind of idea of, not the idea from scratch, they, you know, they recommended a plan, and we said, you have an exemplar, and they really didn't have an exemplar to match it. So I'm excited that we're kind of on the cutting edge of making some plan, um, to drive. The idea of these things is it drives when the people in the room change, right? Same thing as everything else that, well, the planning is that, you know, what makes, um, the equity work ongoing, and how do you keep it in all that you do, so. That's for it, questions?
So have the equity audit book looked at this draft and given any feedback on it?
No. So they, um, how did, we didn't run it by Tim or anything of that, we, no.
No, we haven't run the content, the text by them, but, um, we did consult with them a little bit on the structure of it, because we made an outline, and it, it is a parallel to the outline for the curriculum management plan, the professional development plan, and the assessment management plan. So that there's coherence, like it begins with a vision, and then it talks about, um, the, the, the way we'll monitor it, the way we'll deliver it, the, the different aspects, and so that all of those, whether it's the curriculum, the P D, or equity. And so those, those were vetted, um, but we haven't seen the final, the final draft that we have now.
Is this document meant to supplement or replace the equity foundation statement?
I think this, this is like a I think this, this is like a roadmap. I think the foundation statement tells you the story of the journey you're taking, and this is the roadmap to make sure you're getting to where you want to go with the, what, what stuffs you have to do along the way, I would analogy to come off, right, I'm telling you like that, um, that's kind of my, kind of that, Laura, would you agree, disagree?
Yeah, it's not the same thing, I mean, because that was, that was an artifact of the anti-racism and equity committee on behalf of the district, and the district approved it, and so that is a standing document. And I think that it belongs in the, in the way things are organized, I think that that belongs in, um, I'm looking for the section where that lives. I think that that belongs in our community engagement section, because it, um, that details, like the plan is that the district meeting structural support for the anti-racism and equity committee, the voluntary group of stakeholders, including staff, admin, alumni, um, that, and caregivers that meet quarterly, and, um, I think that is part of maintaining is our shared vision statement, but district approved shared vision, it really is an artifact of that collaboration.
So that foundation statement is going to remain in public facing, it'll stay on the website?
Yes.
Next to this, thanks.
We do have a question, Sarah and I have a question, so when I say we, I just mean Sarah and I, we, um, think that it could be edited, you know, and so we are not sure what the process would be for making it just a, a little cleaner, easier to read. I guess that might take a vote, it might be clear on where it lives in terms of being voted on by school committees or whatnot, but that is on our minds, is, so if we want to make this, you know, a one-page, if we want to try to just make, like, not lose anything about what went into it, but make it easier to access for everybody, we would like to have a nice access, accessible.
Yeah, sounds good, I, I was one of the early authors on that, and I would support.
Oh, good, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
I'm, I'm just curious about something, and that is that, uh, uh, it seems to me that in Sunderland, we also have a school council for this, so we have a school council and school committee, and it's the school council compared with, you know, with the annual school improvement plan, that it seems to me much of this work is way more familiar to that body than to this body, granted that you've been on, sitting on both, um, and, which to me is just fine, but I'm wondering if, you know, this sort of discussion should be something that is most, you know, perhaps even more so carried on with the school council rather than with this group? Because I know that they there, there was reactions from what you and Joe were saying when we went over to the presentation there and so on, that you guys were way more aware of what was going on in Sunderland than we had been exposed to just as part of our committee business, I mean, okay, well, the others are parents here and so on, and so they know about it. Personally, I was like, oh, there's a lot of stuff there that's going on at school council, so on, and so I'm wondering if you're if, if a similar discussion really takes place at school council, where they may have generally more invested on an ongoing basis.
The school council right now is focused in on a specific piece of this, of gathering, sort of surveying, but using street data, um, sort of taking the temperature of the community to figure out what else could be worked on, um, and it's going to, that's going to be very, very time-consuming for us to do, so I'm not sure we can actually fit this in, in this school year.
But it does, it does naturally go there, so the school council is supposed to be the one that's approved the school improvement plans from suggestion from the principal. And so the principal is gonna get those suggestions from the strategic plan that's built by the administrative team, you know, it's, it's technically it comes from my office envision, but it's really administrative team, um, which is supposed to be fed by the equity board, so it's gonna come down that stream, and then so Ben should be going to our school council and saying, okay, here's our, you know, as you remember how he sets it up, there are the different areas of working on, and under equity, you know, right now, he would be saying, you know, we're, you know, we're rolling out the new curriculum, um, the new reading curriculum, which is really, is really, is, uh, has a lot of emphasis in that area, and, you know, these different areas, so that they do have a hand in that, and then they might be saying what other community outreach projects, which they probably get their hands dirty with, um, being involved with, rather than just kind of stamping things through or approving things, that's kind of sounds like we're doing something now, trying to get feedback from the community on certain things, so it, that's kind of the streamline where it does exist. The same thing with, where a school committee gets involved is that the strategic plan is gonna, it, it gets run by a school committee, and so does the school improvement plan after it's been through them, so it comes back around, you won't know the intimate details of it, and depending on, of, you know, like you know, like tonight, like when we start talking about the budget, that's, you're gonna walk away thinking a lot about budget, you know what I mean, they're like, you have other priorities sometimes, but um, it, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to, you guys have a lot, as a school committee, a lot, you oversee it all, right?
Right, but in this particular area, it is really something where the school council is carrying the ball on it, starts to be, and that therefore uh, should make sure that they, you know, whatever conversation that the administration feels like it needs to have with Sunderland, that that conversation in this area be directed directly to the school council and not somehow through our liaison person. Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me somehow that there's, there needs to be direct blocking, and you know, maybe that means you go into a school council meeting instead of, you know, or in addition to a school committee meeting or something like that on this stuff, because, um, you know, that's where things are happening, that's where changes are being made. And I'm not just trying to get out of it, okay, but it's like, you know, I feel, I feel like totally unprepared to talk about, you know, things going on in this, because we haven't been dealing with.
Okay.
Just tossing it out.
I actually think that one of the benefits of having just this plan, which is static, it just says all of the places where equity shows up in our systems, it shows up in hiring, it shows up in assessments, it shows up in curriculum selection, it shows up in professional development, it shows up in and by outlining all of the places where we need to take responsibility for thinking through an equity lens, in addition to all the other lens, like rigorous, um, academics and the budget, like we have so many lenses to think through, and by adding this as an official lens, I think it just makes it, it kind of paves the sidewalk so that people can bring up issues related to, um, an equity experience as easily as they bring up an issue related to, uh, academic experience or a budget experience, if we just, by making this formal plan, I think some things won't change, it just, I hope that it changes to the district by making it just more normal to talk about and easier, if nobody feels like they're blazing the trail, like the district has paved the path, so anybody can walk on it, and if that's what's on your mind, then you know that there's lots of places to go, I hope. Just because it's hard to be a trailblazer, talking about something that is, hasn't always been prioritized, but once we say this is a priority, I hope that's what it is.
May I offer one piece of feedback?
Yeah.
Uh, so the school council has just finished reading the book Street Data.
Oh, I know that book.
You do know that book, um, so as I read through this equity plan, just the one thing that felt to me like it was missing was, um, sort of a focus on any individual voices, it talked about, you know, surveys
Yeah.
and having aggregate data, but what about when you have the one outlier who's really inequitably impacted somehow?
Yeah, yeah.
How, how are those marginalized, what are going to come to the center and focus?
Good enough.
I wish that there was reference to that, but to, to really, um, you know, say, say that the marginalized voices need to be you know, supported, heard, responded to meaningfully. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you for all of your work on that, that's a great document. Uh, moving on to, this is first reading of new policies, do we want to read all of those letters? We've got a slew of new policies that we'll vote on next time.
Correct.
We've kind of already discussed this process.
Um.
Anybody have questions about these particular policies? Do we need to say anything else about them?
I mean, I have Cliff Notes on what each one is, I kind of ran through them the other night, I don't know if it's helpful or not. It's up to you if you want me to do it, or? What's that?
I have no preference.
Okay.
My you know, my second time reading through it was that there was something that is a big deal.
Right. They are.
You know, there weren't anything that was, uh, there was only that's one question, anyway, basically, they're not like, you know, some way in which we're changing our operations or solving some problem, or, you know, possibly creating some other, they were all so sort of mundane.
And I can get, you know, it
And it was like, oh, God, how many of these things do they have?
I can do it, I can do it in two minutes, and then you'll, you'll, you'll have an idea of what each one is, right, I'll do, how about I do that, because I, I did preface when I was using, um, E E A E C is student conduct on buses, is also our J I C C and should be cross-referenced. So we already have the policy, but we don't have it as it's titled as E E A E C, it's under G J I C C. Alright, so it's just it being placed in two places. E E A G is transportation in private vehicles, there's updated language around query checks to make sure that, um, that the drivers are, of volunteers and such have been query checked. B G I is staff participation in political activities, just the, it, um, there's just clear language around that during the workday, staff members may not be, um, um, participating in political activities outside the workday, they certainly can. G C A, um, professional staff positions is a new policy, describe, it, um, talks about having job descriptions and new positions approved by school committee. G C K is professional staff assignments and transfer, um, this is a new one for us, that probably should be in there, but basically talks of the principal as the authority if nothing changes in practice, has the authority to assign what positions, um, people are doing in the building. G D B, um, support staff contracts and compensation plans, this is a new policy, um, it is for people who are not on a collective bargaining contract, um, that, you know, we have to basically, just gives a general policy about, that they have to be on salary schedules and pay time and half and that kind of thing, um. Uh, negotiation legal status, um, for H B, um, just basically, they, they said you should have that page as a legal, that negotiation is a legal, um, process. J F, um, school admissions, um, follows our current practice, we just have it in the policy regarding how kindergarten admissions works. School choice is J F B B, J F B B one means frontier, um, basically, they're, they are different because the dates are slightly different, but it gives an range of when the school has to make the decisions by, um, if they're going to be a school choice school. So those are the new policies, um, the removing policies, um, administrative report, not part of the master M A S C and is not needed. Enrollment projections is not part of the master M A S C and is not needed, um. Both of them, as you can read through, you can ask for those, you can ask for those reports, we haven't been giving five-year enrollment averages and that kind of thing, basically because there's no when we had, when we part of, we were part of N S D, the information was always off and we didn't help with any of this. G A is personnel policies and policy goals, it's not part of the M A S A C, but I also want to say that we did our own goals around equity work, so we created our own policy to talk about, um, personnel goals. Um, G C C D, domestic violence leave policy, um, is, has been legally changed and known to recommend as N A S A, M A S C policy. Um, G D Q D, suspension dismissal of support staff members, um, it can be found in the collective bargaining agreement, it is also not M A S C policy. Retirement, they're all, I probably just said they're not, they're all, none of them are M A S C policies that we're seeing here. Retirement of professional staff members was almost comical, we have to let them retire. Retirement of support staff members, basically, you have to let support staff members retire, um, again, both of them not needed. Negotiations, um, it's not needed, it's full filler language and doesn't really say anything. J V A, student to student harassment can now be found under C I'll just read them, sexual harassment, bullying prevention, harassment of students, and non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation policies. J H B B A, um, public absence notification program policy is not part of M A S C, and can be found, our attendance policies are found in our handbooks. Religious holidays can be found under J H, and it's not part of the master, it, it talks about religious holidays under, um, other J H, which is, I don't, I don't remember the title, but it's a, uh, absence and time off, and then corporal punishment, if I have to explain. You don't need to have that, and it's against law.
Thank you.
Going back to it's not gonna be late to go, oh no, in this group here, J F B B and J F B B one, which are about school choice?
Yep.
Okay, um, they both reference where they, well, J F B B relates to the elementary schools.
Yep.
And it says that, uh, by June first, there will be a public hearing to be held to review person participation in the school choice program.
So basically, your, um, public, it's on the agenda of the school committee as your public hearing, you're having a discussion about that, and the public can give comment, anything that's on the agenda.
And that's considered as sufficient, we don't have to open a special hearing and close a special hearing or anything like that.
No. Okay, so you publicly made a public decision on whether or not it will be a school choice school, and we do it way earlier than this, so it's by, so if there was any reason, like let's say this is a year where like, actually, when we talk about it, this could be a year where we're not sure if we're gonna accept school choice, we may have to wait till the end of the budget, the closer it gives a deadline where eventually you have to let families know, um, we've been a lot earlier than that, and we'll, you know, actually, it's probably next month, I think, we're gonna probably vote on whether or not it will be a school choice school, um, because we have to let families know because they want to get in there for it.
And then
It's gonna be the cure.
And then J F B B one applies to the regional school?
Yep.
And it says this policy not to admit school choice? Or has that been, is that supposed to be in red and therefore that comes out?
That's what I thought too, yeah.
Hmm.
Right there in the, in the first line.
Is this, I, let's change, no, it's in there, thank you. That's supposed to be probably red to remove.
Yeah, that can be, of course you say that it's probably in red.
Yep.
Not bold.
I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how that happened though, alright, I'll pick it up fixed.
And that then the pride of us, so.
Yeah, but still, you guys vote them all.
We have
Yeah, notice we're voting, why are we voting on something that's a regional policy?
Oh, because we all share a handbook.
We share that, we share that, the policy handbook has both, and so we try for consistency, they also vote on your one.
That's fine.
Technically, if it came, pushed him to self, you would, you would say, no, it's, we don't want to vote on that, it's a regional policy, it doesn't I guess you could be truthful to your poli, your vote doesn't matter on that, because it doesn't, you don't have the authority to do that, but anyways, school choice is a thank you, it was good to catch.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Alright, first reading complete, moving on to the budget.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump on, that way I can
Control what?
Scroll down.
Did no control issues, was there?
Okay. Okay. Um, so a couple of things first, before we get started, as I, I did send out a new packet, and I printed some of that, so I don't know if anyone wants, you can take, if not, I'll take them back, but some people like paper and some people don't, um, so there are some definite pros and cons and some easier decisions and harder decisions that we're gonna have to make as part of this, this discussion, that's normal, right, we talk about hard things every time, and we get through the budget, and some of it's gonna be easy, and some of it's gonna be more challenging. Uh, this is the first draft, so as I said in my email to you, you don't have all of the typical data that you have, there's not a line-by-line budget presented yet. Part of that reasoning is because we need to make some decisions on where the budget is going, and I didn't want to give you three different versions of pages of line-by-line items, so um, there's more materials as we go through this process, February and especially into March, when we have select board present with us, and then for our own public hearing, so there's more of that coming. And to start us off, we're gonna recap, um, FY twenty-four, just as a quick reminder, even though we're looking at those budget numbers monthly, I think it's And to start us off, we're going to recap on F Y twenty four, just as a quick reminder, even though we're looking at those budget numbers monthly, I think it's good for us to reflect back and see where things were last year. So our adopted budget came in at six point six three percent. Uh, that covered wage obligations for increases for all staff across the board, uh, union and non-union. And then we had adjustments of thirty four thousand based on prior year actuals for existing expenses. Uh, we had a revolving fund adjustment as our revolving funds couldn't continue to carry the same weight that they had in prior years. We were seeing revenues coming down and expenses not changing. Uh, and we did add one new position, which was a school adjustment counselor. Uh, the original budget was higher by a hundred thousand dollars. So we would have been, you know, well into eight plus percent, uh, but we made the decision to fund a hundred thousand dollars of that by Essar, which brought us down to the six point six three. That's what went to town meeting and that's what was adopted. So for fiscal year twenty five, uh, we haven't talked about timeline at all. So I thought that I would give us all a little refresher here. I'm not going to read it for each of these, but it is a, a four meeting process as it stands right now. All of the meetings I believe are all at six o'clock. I didn't put the times on here, but I'm pretty sure that some of the ones are all at six P M. Um, so we have, we're going to hear this story multiple times. Things may change as we go through. We really want to be, uh, more concrete in February so that going into that public hearing in March, we have a more realistic number. And then we will have the second meeting to vote on the budget in late March. And I put April twenty sixth in parentheses because I think that's the town meeting date, but it's not on their website yet, but it's last Friday in April, right? So I was pretty sure that's where we were. Quick refresher on how the budget is developed. Uh, so the goal of the district during budget development is to plan a needs based student centered, fiscally responsible budget for the upcoming school year. Uh, we take input from all of our stakeholders. Uh, Ben has conversations with staff at the school based level. We're having administrative conversations. And that trickles down to any administrator, special education, facilities, curriculum, making sure that we have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed when we're submitting uh, the first drafts of the new budget. And then we try to have a balanced approach, you know, we don't have a lot of extra money in our planning, but we do want to consider new needs and initiatives as we go through the process, at least initially, so that you all know things that, uh, we as administration think that the school needs that we may not have. We do include those in here. Um, primarily, we are looking at a level service budget, but it's important to note that level service does not mean level funding. There is always an increase when we're looking at level services. If for nothing else but salaries and wages. Uh, so we have contractual obligations that cause that level service to increase for existing staff based on the two union contracts and then our, uh, support staff and other school based and then central office staff to receive annual increases as well. And then there's always inflation and things like that, that factor into the level service budget. I wanted to give you some information on expenses. This is something that we don't talk in a great detail about, but when you look at the monthly reports, you do see these function codes, which this is set by Desi. This is not something that the school district sets up. We have to report on that at the end of the year based on function code. Um, so I wanted to give you a little bit of description of how they break things down. So there's district administration, instruction, pupil services, uh, plant, physical plant operations, benefits and fixed charges. There are other codes between six thousand and nine thousand, but we typically don't use them here at this level. They have a lot to do with, um, debt service, you know, buying land, those kinds of things that we really don't get into a whole lot here, buying vehicles, things like that. Um, so I didn't even include them on here for you because they're not even one of our expense codes. And then finally, in that nine thousand category, those are expenses related to out of district placement. So this will come more into play when you see the line by line budget. Hopefully this description gives you a little bit more understanding of how things are categorized and why they're categorized the way that they are. Um, but when we talk about these generally and looking at our budget on the next page of the presentation, um, it correlates with our budget drivers. So you can see here in green, uh, instruction, which is direct instruction to the student population. So anything related to curriculum, teaching staff, um, including I A's, um, materials, supplies, technology, pretty much anything that it takes to educate our students falls under those instructional categories in the function code two thousand range. That is about, um, three quarters of our budget. So you can see that a good chunk of our funds are going directly back to student teaching. Um, and then the other categories there that we just talked about pupil services. So at the elementary school, uh, that really accounts for transportation costs and school lunch. Those are the two big ones under pupil services and, um, uh, health services. So the nursing office, uh, supplies and materials and staffing in that category. Operations and maintenance is the second largest component for us. Uh, that includes utilities, buildings, repairs, custodial lines, uh, facilities, staff and central office, things along those lines. Uh, district administration primarily refers to central office staff and whatever falls under the school committee function code. So if school committee was receiving stipends or salary, um, that would fall under that line. Your expenses for trips when you go to the conference, um, supplies and materials, if there's, you know, any budget books or anything that we're printing for you all falls under that line. Benefits and fixed charges, there's not a lot related to school budget under benefits and fixed charges primarily because the town handles benefits for the staff. But some examples of things that fall under this line are separation costs for retirement. If we have to pay those out based on the contract, uh, central office benefits, um, insurance falls under here. So if we pay liability insurance, if the town bills us back for that, that stuff falls under that category. And then out of district placement typically is a large portion of the total budget, but when we're looking at this, we're just looking at general fund. We're not looking at any of our revolving funds. So we do have out of district placement here, but this slice of the pie is small. Um, which could be because we're using revolving funds to supplement, or we don't have a significant number of out of district placements. Uh, so primary budget drivers are salaries and wages, facilities and operations, transportation and special education costs. And that is not just district wide, not just Western Mass. This is theme across the state, if not across the country. And salaries and wages of that instructional uh, related expenditures, probably three quarters of that piece of the pie is just wages to our faculty and staff that are teaching students. Alright, so now that you have some info and some history, let's look at what we're actually talking about for first draft of the budget. So looking at level services, which takes existing staffing and programs, as I said earlier. And that's our starting point. So the first thing that we do is look at wage increases uh, across the board. So contractual for unit A and unit C, school based staff and central office. Uh, we take into consideration any attrition. So if we know we have somebody resigning or retiring, we make adjustments. That could go up or down. Uh, we may have a brand new teacher that, you know, didn't have their master's degree yet and they came in at a bachelor's, but we anticipate that when we hire someone new, we are going to hire someone with the master. So that's where you could see the increase. There's also benefits where we know we have a master teacher who's at the, you know, highest column and highest step. And they're retiring and we know we're probably going to replace them with someone who maybe has middle of the road experience. So we see savings there. So that's being captured in this level service budget. That's one of the first things that we start to look at. And our wage increase for Sunderland for next year is anticipated to be significantly lower than it has been in prior years. Just as a reminder, also COLA next year is two percent, uh, for I A's and for teachers. And then the step increases on the teacher salary schedule average about three point one nine percent. Um, and then for I A's, it, it varies depending on the step. It's not as consistent as the teacher stepping, but it is generally around another three percent on top of that if they're stepping. So in regards to teachers for next year or anyone on the unit A contract, which is not just classroom grade level teachers, it includes anyone that's on a, you know, the nurse, the school psychologist, O T, P T, all of those pieces. So anyone that falls under the unit A contract. Couple of things to note, uh, we do have a few teachers who are moving to step fourteen, which means that we're seeing some more significant increases for them because they will sit at fourteen until they hit that longevity bump, um, which is not for several years out. And then on the positive side, uh, we do have a two retirements that we're capturing in this wage, uh, increase for next year. One of which, uh, we are not replacing, um, and I will let Ben speak to that a little bit, uh, before we move on in the presentation. But then the other one is, um, a, as I said, a master teacher who we anticipate with the new hire coming in at a lower step. So this increase would probably be at a minimum seventy five to eighty thousand more if we weren't seeing that attrition next year. So I think that's important for us to think about as we talk about the direction of the budget and what that would mean, you know, another seventy thousand is two percent. So that's a pretty significant number. Ben, do you want to talk about that one position before I keep going?
Yeah, we discussed this in June last year where we had a staff member out on maternity leave. And, um, the individual who was going to be retiring at the end of this year was going to fill in as the classroom teacher from August to the end of December. And then from January was going to fill that interventionist role because that staff member was going to be coming back. Um, that staff member ended up is gone the entire year on maternity leave. So, um, they're just, um, the retiree is, um, filling in as a, the first grade teacher until the end of the year. So that interventionist role, just because it was a really unique circumstance and in a, you know, in normal budget year, we wouldn't necessarily have added that position. So that's what it refers to as the, the unit A attrition. We're just not filling that interventionist role. If that makes sense.
I'm not sure I get it, but maybe it's fair to explain. You know, not in front of a camera. So you, you know, just, I want to make sure I really understand it. You know, what, what is, the interventionist role was, I thought we had a new position that was an interventionist.
With a new position that is the school adjustment counselor, right? And we were going to be up a classroom teacher.
Right.
Um, so instead of, right, we're up a classroom teacher. So instead of cutting a position.
Right.
We chose to fill, um, fill a maternity leave with that extra classroom teacher.
Right.
And then they were going to serve as an interventionist for the remainder of the year with the plan at retirement to take that off the budget.
Does that make sense to everyone? So currently that person is filling a classroom teacher role. So the interventionist idea never happened. So with eliminating this position, we're not losing services to students or anything like that. I want to make sure that that's a little different. Does that help Peter?
Maybe.
Sorry?
Yeah, no.
It's complicated though. For sure. Okay, um, so I, I'm not going to read all of these amounts out to you as to what unit C, school based staff and central offices. I will make a comment about central office. This is significantly lower than you would see in a normal year primarily because we're capturing the savings of the nurse leader position because the nurse leader position was full time. We didn't make the change until after budget had been approved last year. So now we're seeing the savings of the nurse leader position. And that is a central office shared position. So everyone district wide is going to see savings from that role this year. So that would be much higher for central office as well. So non wage increases to go through that quickly because there's not a lot to talk about here. Uh, we do have employee separation costs. So that's a retirement uh, contractual obligation that we're going to have to pay out this year. That's fifty five thousand is the rough estimate. And then I always go through line by line and look at a multi-year comparison of actuals for anything that's not wages. So we are going to have a couple of increases next year. Our accounting software line, which is the central office accounting system, we have made some upgrades to that. We're seeing multiple years now of that line being over. Um, there is an adjustment in here for the transportation line because our contract is up for renewal. We're just putting that out for bid uh, this month. It's going to go pu- get publicized Monday for the regular transportation, not special ed transportation. So I put in a small amount there. That could go up. We don't know what's going to happen when the bid comes in. We could get one bid, which is I think what happened last time where we got three bids and it becomes more competitive. So there may be more to come about that, but right now there is a buffer. And then a couple of other lines that are consistently over year to year, which is primarily due to inflation are related to utilities. Our trash keeps going up. You know, so we're trying to adjust for some of those things. Phone charges, the town is back billing us for some of the phone lines that they get built from Verizon for. So I made some adjustments there. So that's eleven thousand dollars. And then two other big adjustments contributing to the six point three four percent level service budget increase are grant adjustments and revolving fund adjustments. So in the current year, in the recap, I mentioned this, we paid a hundred thousand dollars of expenses from this year on Essar. You're not seeing the true hundred thousand dollar reflection here because part of that was the teacher salary. So rather than putting that on a budget, we have a teacher retiring. So we're not seeing as much of an increase to budget because of that change. The other adjustment, this is year two of this happening where our revolving funds, and as we go through and we talk about the revolving fund balances, you're going to see expenses are exceeding revenue. This is not, shouldn't be new conversation. It's probably new for you, but nobody else. Um, repeat here that our revenues are coming down, our expenses are staying the same. They're not dropping at the same amount. So the only thing that we can do is find another funding source. So we start by putting those onto budget and then see if we have other options. So that is the total of the two hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase as our starting point that you're seeing here. From there, we look at new requests and initiatives. So that's where our stakeholders come into play. Uh, Ben has his conversations. I talk to other administrators and we see what the needs are. So the ask I think here is minimal and reasonable, you know, sixteen thousand is probably roughly half a percent. Um, and these, while they're new requests and initiatives, they're more along the lines of right siding the budget. Um, field trips, we are seeing that more and more families and students need support with scholarships so that they can continue to participate in field trips. Part of that cost is also, um, transportation. Busting is going up district wide. And that includes for our trips. So there's an increase there. Um, curriculum consumables, we have this amazing new curriculum that you all have heard about multiple times now. It comes with a cost because we have new consumables. We did look at, okay, what were we purchasing previously for this product and what is the new product that we need and made adjustments? So it's not a hundred percent, um, all just a, an increase to the budget because we swapped some things out, but we are seeing some new needs for consumables there. And then the next three, um, are recommendations from Ben to increase primarily based on inflation. Um, not that we've been over in these lines necessarily, although general, general buildings repairs, you know, we always need more money there, but medical supplies and materials is based on needs in the building. So is general supplies and the cost of everything is. Not a significant ask here, you know, no new staffing, anything along those lines. It's really a minor amount.
Very silly graphic.
When it's in the PowerPoint, the money is actually moving. I love it. Alright, so before we keep talking about next steps with the budget, because uh, from an administrative perspective, six point eight three is high, especially when we came off of a year that felt high last year at six point six three. So you know, it's hard to keep going back to the town and asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So before we continue the conversation of what options we have to bring the budget down to something that might be more palatable to the town, we want to have a conversation about enrollment. Um, and I think you're going to hear some of the same themes here and Darius and Ben, please jump in um, and help me out as part of this conversation goes on, but our enrollment is staying relatively steady. It's declining slightly. We're currently at one eighty four and we're projecting right now to be between one sixty six and one seventy next year. So it's a slight decline. But if you look back over the last three years, it's generally the range that we've been in. Primarily the pre K and the K classes are the ones that fluctuate those numbers. So pre K this year ended up being at twenty eight students. If you look back at last budget year cycle, the projection was similar to this where we're thinking maybe we'll have two, two smaller classes. So that's really where the extra students come in as we go through, you know, the next six months leading up to the next school year. But as you can see, our class sizes are very small and we also had this conversation last year. We actually talked about reducing a teacher last year. This goes along with part of what Ben just talked about, that we ended up using um, some staff creatively rather than dropping a This goes along with part of what Ben just talked about, that we ended up using um, some staff creatively rather than dropping a staff member. But we're really at a point where we feel like we need to continue that conversation and reconsider reducing staffing um, in the new year to help reduce the budget. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to mention is that school choice, based on these numbers, is about twenty percent of our population. Um, as we tighten up class sizes, the opportunity to grow school choice diminishes, which means it's less revenue potential for us. Uh, so that's just something to keep in mind. Uh, we have uh, thirty point five five FTEs on the unit A contract and twenty-one FTEs on the unit C contract. So those are just things info for you to consider as you look at total number of students.
And giving unit C again?
Thirty point five five um, teachers.
For you today.
And then twenty-one unit C. Anything that you want to add about enrollment before we go on?
I think we'll be, we'll end up coming back to it. Um, but there is the, as you're looking at some of these numbers, some of the other conversations we're going to have is whether or not we end up freezing school choice and not accepting more school choice so that, because we're in this weird position where if you have a class size of, let's looking at the first grade class, you have a class size of eighteen. Well, you don't want to have more, you could, you could add more school choice, but then you could also have more residents come in. And then all of a sudden you start getting a number, you know, we want to see our classes, you know, ideally between, you know, the eighteen range, you know, um, that's probably the, the kind of the sweet spot, you know, you can go up to, I mean, we haven't seen classes that size in this building in a while, but you know, going up to, you know, eighteen to twenty-two is an acceptable range and technically even bigger. But um, I think that's where most people would say it's depending on the sports you have. Um. So understanding that, you know, with the, we, if we go to one section, we have to lock school choice, or we don't go to one section, we may have to lock school choice because then all of a sudden we get to where we have, you know, maybe what you can see in like this current, next year's sixth grade, we have twelve and thirteen, you know what I mean? It's, it's almost too big. It's right on that, it's right on that line, you know, um. There's probably not a good example of that one. There's not a good example within this one because many of these classes, it's classes of twenty-four could exist. Um.
A single.
A single classes.
And just, uh, these are based off of which enrollment?
October first.
October first.
Yeah, so there may be changes.
Yeah, we have fluctuated, fluctuated in the opposite direction um, for a few of these grade levels. So, but it's still, it's still borderline. And then, you know, the, the kindergarten piece where it lists nineteen right there, um. About half of those are known students. So either school choice families, um, that have siblings in the upper grades or are in our current preschool. Um, the other half on the town census. So we don't necessarily have our pulse on, on them at this point. Uh, the registration packets didn't just go out or become available. Um, so we don't have all that information yet.
Um, and I also just want to know in case this is new info to anyone, but the reason we use October first numbers is because those are the numbers that the state uses to build the chapter seven of new funding, um, which is the state aid that we received. So we always look at those. Obviously, there's a lot of changes between October first and the end of the school year, but um, that's why we look at that number in case anyone was wondering. Any enrollment questions before you go?
Has there been historically a year that has been a big surprise? Where you look at the numbers of October one, you plan it, and then all of a sudden boom, it's doubled? Because of, or not maybe, maybe a quarter, either twenty-five percent more or more.
Not to need to create an additional section. So there was one year where we left first grade with thirty-one students and nine new students moved in just over the summer alone. Um, there's another year um, where the, the school year had already started in sixth grade and we went from low to mid twenties and pushed that number to thirty. Um, so we didn't create two classes. Uh, it was a try and year for the sixth grade team and hats off to them. But again, we haven't had an, an instance where we've gone from one after the budget cycle to having to meet over the summer while, while there's a ton of kids right now.
Do you have a question?
I'm sure I understand correctly here. The number of sections here shows this is projected for FY twenty-five and that's what your budget is based on.
Based on current staff.
Already dropping one section.
Well, it's not technically dropping a section with the way that things are structured.
Well, I'm just saying from, from a, from a point in the past, in the recent past, okay, where we had, it was like, two, three years ago, we went to, we had two sections in all grades, okay? We dropped one two, three years ago, something like that. And then in the current timeframe, however it's actually playing out, we're ending up dropping another. Okay, and that's built into the budget so that when you are considering you, you know, reducing one more section, you're basically, that would make three grades where there would be only one section.
Correct.
That's correct. I just want to make sure I understand that. Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
So the, the one where we reduced the one through this convoluted process that sort of been going on now or just recently or just to come, um, you know, that's a done deal. That's not going back and reconsidering that one.
Right. So you're correct. It would be probably, we could probably have the clear to say that we're looking at, well, not yet. Cause we'll, we'll get to the next page, but this next second posit- it would be two positions that are actually cut from the FTE.
That's correct.
And so that, that's a good way of putting it out because it does get kind of lost in because it was last year's planning into this year where it kind of promised, I guess we said we promised reduction later on. Um.
I mean, the deal, I remember the discussion, I think, was that we were going to end up at the, end up with cutting a section, but we were going to take a little longer getting there because you had a way, it worked out to keep this teacher, you know, very gainfully employed for the last year before she retired.
Correct.
Okay, and this worked out a little differently than anticipated, but we're still kind of the same point.
Correct.
Okay.
So, all right, so let's move on. Um, enrollment is a big part of this conversation as we move forward to consider options to reduce the budget from the six point eight three percent. So uh, the first thing that we talked about is now that we know, uh, at least at this point, we do not need to hold the rural aid funds for any additional McKinney-Vento funding unless something changes in the next six months. Uh, we have uh, about thirty-eight thousand left in rural aid and uh, we would recommend using that uh, one percent reduction for the budget. So almost thirty-four thousand. One percent of the budget is like thirty-three thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars or something like that. Um. So we're saying use one percent of the remaining rural aid to help offset the budget there. Um, and then we are recommending a staffing reduction of sixty thousand dollars. Um, we talked about, you know, what does that look like? Is it multiple staff? Is it IAs? Is it teachers? Is it something else? You know, and, and that's really a internal administrative decision. We don't have to get into the nitty-gritty of that. Um, I don't think at least.
Not tonight, definitely not tonight. It's the, and I mean, because that's basically just for, so we make a recommendation. If you don't like the recommendation, we come back and give you a done recommendation. Um. School committee should not get in the process of saying, you know, dictate, we want to see the third grade cut. I mean, you can make, you can make the suggestion or, hey, we're concerned about that class being too low, but you really, it does go back to the um, the school to recommend the cuts. You say you want it lower, we come back to what we think operationally you can get lower. So I'm just kind of saying in process and we have to discuss process, that's fine too. Feel free to, don't feel like that's, don't feel like you're walking on ice and eating egg children or any of that kind of stuff. Feel free to ask questions like, can we do this and do that? And many times we cross all those lines because it's, it's a small group and it's an intimate group in the sense of uh, you're not, you know, thirty thousand person school district, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's stuff, you know intimately who people are and that kind of stuff. But there is some separation there. So we're looking at reducing the staff person and we actually haven't finalized what that would be. Um. However, right now there's no, it would have to be a reduction. There's not a retirement in mind right now.
An additional retirement.
There's not an additional retirement. So there is, there is, um, yeah, so.
So within these funds, I think what you're trying to say is that this is actual people that are, are working here, whether it's one person, two people, whatever it pans out to be. The other thing I want to say is, you know, obviously we would have more conversations if we were talking about um, reducing program, you know, people sort of get worried that like, oh, you know, you're going to cut the arts or you're going to cut the library. And when, you know, those are typically some of the first things to go when you hear about schools reducing budgets. And obviously we would have more conversations with that at this level before those decisions were made. Uh, but based on staffing, it really looks like people that are in a classroom, nothing. Based on enrollment, should I say based on staff? I forget it. Based on enrollment, it looks like big classroom staff. Um, so that would reduce us another one point eight percent. And then uh, as the town has um, helped us out in the past with employee separation costs, we could submit and ask for the town to fund the fifty-five thousand dollars in retirement expenditures. And what I want to say there is while we're talking about reducing the budget by one point six five percent, if we pull that off, it is still an expense for the town. So the town has to absorb that in some way, shape or form. It just doesn't fall in our budget. So it's sort of falsifying what we're asking for, putting it into separate bucket, buckets, just like capital is in another bucket.
The fifty-five thousand surprises me. Is that just for the two positions, two retirements? Each one is twenty-five to thirty?
Mm-hmm.
That been that much before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a normal number.
We, we're, we're, with our last contract negotiation, we sunsetted that benefit.
I understand, but that sunsetted for anybody who is new to the system.
As of a year and a half ago. Yeah, so it's going to take us thirty years to see that impact.
Whatever. And if, uh, okay, I, I had thought somehow it was more like a twenty thousand.
Depends on their years of service.
Yeah. And how much sick days they have banked and there's different pieces of it. So there's some different components where if you take, you know, the multi-year longevity, it, the math works out different. So it's a formula. And we have a running sheet so that we can be prepared for these conversations.
We probably, this is probably, we got another twenty years or something to, before this all works its way through the system.
Mm-hmm. And the retirees have been very dependable. Haven't had a loss like this.
Which is amazing until we get to this point and then, you know, we have.
But it's, it's, I mean, it's.
No, it's a contract. I'm, I'm not, I'm not debating any of that. It's just whatever.
And it's deserved.
Because when you, when you have at some point down the road, have a discussion with town hall about this and then it's, you want to go into that informed. That's all, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Sure.
So, you know, because it seems like, you know, essentially that's asking the town to fund the employee. I mean, that was something that came from the town because they said you didn't trust the school. Okay, they didn't trust the school that it, uh, you know, that it was, you know, this is a number that's bouncing all over the place. And, and then you come in one year and say, well, we got high retirement costs. And then the next year we don't have any, you don't change your baseline back to where it was and go on. And so it was like, the only way we're going to be able to trust this thing is if we pull it out and just fund it separately.
It makes sense to fund it that way, but it does, we do have to remember in years where it goes up, the town also has only so much money. So you, you really do have to, when, especially when it's a, you know, a percent and a half of that.
You just want to make sure you know what you're talking about, not giving them that information. Because I think there is support for continuing to do it the same way, even though it's somewhat regen support because competition support has changed and I think there's, I'm sure there's more trust, but it may be still like, yeah, this is probably a sensible way to do it.
Yeah. And some of our, a couple of our districts do have this built into their budget because they're larger schools and they have one a year regularly, you know, Frontier builds in for three a year because of the size of their staff. But Conway, Sunderland, and we, we just, you just don't have capacity to build in a two percent budget placeholder really when you're not going to have it the next year. So necessarily, um. So it is great if the town can continue to support it, but it's also just a reminder that it's still a bill that they have to pay on behalf of the school. I don't want that to get lost in translation as we're talking about budget reduction.
So is the rural aid, is the rural aid their number, the pretty much the balance that's left in it at this point?
Um, there's about thirty-eight thousand. I think we're going to get to it maybe on the next slide. So no questions about any of these options for reduction?
Are, are you sort of straw pulling us tonight about whether you want, whether we want these included going next month?
That's up to you. You know, you, we look for guidance and, you know, would love to hear your feedback on what you think. But if you also need to sit on it and we wait and come back to it in February, then that's what we do as well.
I mean, for me, A and C are very easy. Um. But I didn't understand when I previewed this. I didn't understand that B was actually cutting somebody in the classroom right now. So I'm not ready to.
You can, you know.
I wasn't, I wasn't expecting a decision meeting tonight. That's for, that's for darn sure. Um, it was more, I guess, having discussions and maybe giving, we want more information on this or what is this, you know, those kinds of things. Um. I guess that this kind of, that's who we are in our normal kind of, if we ever where we get a little bit deeper and then get some.
We had a bit of discussion last year about uh, our policy with A, with the A's that we, we had where we have a, you know, one in each classroom policy, but he said it wasn't a requirement and like Deerfield had, you know, maybe things in, you know, some percentage, a large percentage, but not in the classroom where they rotated or whatever. And it's the one thing that was, I think this is fair to say that the, you know, there is certainly more turnover, often turnover among the A's, um, more so than you might find among the teachers. And so that if there was a way of if you needed to find savings here and there was a way that, that was somebody that in fact had decided to, you know, take their, their work someplace else, you know, again, most likely in aid or something like that, then that has a obvious advantage of that you're not, you know, laying on somebody as a.
Right.
Yes, that's a bad, you know, that's, that's real bad. I mean, I, one of the things I was proud of stuff here going through all COVID time was, you know, we didn't do any of that.
Right.
And I thought that was really admirable. And so that, um, I looked at this and the number is, uh, you know, it's a big number. Obviously, you know, you take away A and C and the number gets more tolerable. Um. So I don't know if it's going to be necessary or not, but it's, it's something that you need to be thinking about.
Right, it is like.
But if you think of it, you can, you know, do it without saying to somebody, sorry, you just lost your job here.
Right.
I'd be really unhappy if we had to do that.
Hmm. Yeah, we don't want to do that either, just to be clear.
I don't know, you know, I asked this evening, this Jeff, I just came from the Capital Planet community meeting and, you know, obviously the town budget, you know, where's the town budget? Who knows? You know, we don't know where, we don't know what the governor's budget is, even though that may not have a lot of surprises. Um. Don't know what, uh, you know, I have no idea at this point what the town budget should be like. Um. Last year was an exceptional year. They had uh, a huge amount of new growth. They finally, they came online. And so, uh, you know, basically we, we kept, if you remember, we kept basically a pretty large budget increase in our plan all the time, waiting to see if we were going to be asked to cut it.
Right.
And we're never asked to cut. You know, it's like the financial committee went wrong with it and the town voted for it and here we are. Um, this year, uh, you know, my gut feeling is that six percent would be a real problem. Um, and I don't know whether, you know, is four percent okay, but maybe not, or is you really need three percent or, you know, if you do, if I'm taking off two point six five here, I'm getting down to four and move over four. You know, that's certainly getting, that's certainly getting, uh, that's, that's way closer to being tolerable. You know, it's not the kind of one like, you gotta be kidding me reaction you're gonna get. It's like, hmm, that's a little more than I was hoping for. But again, who knows? Cause you know, I mean, it's good we didn't spend all the time doing all the, you know, remind I am on all this because we don't have any guidance in it either.
I, I, I know it comes off colder when I say it this way, but you know, when we, we and you folks are responsible for a budget that is reasonable with town. And I do get concerned when we're having class size is under ten. And what is fiscally responsible for the town? And if we're going to go to the town on a flip side, if we're going to go to town last year and say, we need to add a position while in, in our population is only, is only about ten students more this year than it's going to be next year. this year than it's gonna be next year, you know, as we proceed. If we're gonna ask for position, we also have to be able to say also pull back. And I know people's lives are connected to it, but on a positive side as well, there may be other spots open in the district, the greater district and teachers, right now, it's their market. So I didn't wanna put that out there that, you know, we do, well, we never wanna say goodbye to anyone. It is a natural occurrence within your budgets. It's the the worst part of the job is maybe you get to retract. But we do also take opportunities to expand when we can. So I just, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna expand, you also you know, I mean, I, I, you know, administratively, I always say to a principal like, oh, I know someone would be good for that job. Like, wherever you're able to hire, you also have to be able to let go. It is, it is a business in the end. And I'm just gonna put that out there because I don't want the emotion to get in the way of we have a class of nine and you have to go and you have to go in front of town, me to explain why it's important. And there may be a reason for a class of nine. We may have some needs in that classroom, that kind of thing. So I just wanna kind of put that out there. The other thing is that what we've looked at in Deerfield, when we have, they've had to do the same kind of thing of constant consolidation in um reduction in staffing is that based on the needs of the classroom, do we, do you do almost like a half reduction where you you lose a teacher, you lose a section, but you haven't add an IA. So they have more support those, depending on what the needs of each classroom. And that's gonna be something that's gonna be conversation as we go through. Is it, you know, we talk, you know, let's talk with Ben and then talking with people, we end up having to reduce one and now there's twenty four students in the classroom. What are the needs in that classroom? And how are they gonna be met? And are you gonna have to get other adult support in that classroom? And how's that gonna work? And there's gonna be some restructuring. But Sunderland is FTE heavy for the size of school. And that's, it's, that's the reality that I have to share with you and, you know, responsible. We're responsible for making it heavy, you know, through the years, I've been here long enough, being here six years. Um, at the same time, you know, it it, they are reducing in size. I mean, um, when I started, you were closer to two hundred, over two hundred.
We're running out of space and we're
Right. And so it's just a, it's a natural flow and you do it with, you do it with, you know, with thought, you think everything and all the components to it, but and maybe we don't have to do it this year, but I'm just saying, you have to have this serious conversation if it is the direction you have to go.
And I, and I really applaud you for your sort of, it seems to me really sensible reasoning about, you know, how you have to approach this. You know, you gotta deal with things when they go one direction, you gotta deal with them when they go the other direction and come up with the best educational model that works for the quickest students that we got. Um, do you know, based on enrollment now, the rural aid bill that we got this bunch obviously was, you know, it's not chucked in the, it comes up on the cherry sheet. It comes out real late with the amount, so it's real hard to plan on it. So there would reasonably be, you know, back to the way that school choice was handled. A number of years is you spend it, you get it, and then you spend it the following year.
Yeah, the challenge is, is that it has to be spent in the current year. So we basically have to, in order to use it in this way, I have to
He's really gonna spend school choice. And that's a good question, though. So Shelley and I have been talking about, and even um, you know, I I bring with Jessica, cause she's been so much involved with the rural aid, but and where we talked about consistency is the number one thing, no, my number one concern, you know, cause we, right now, you know, when we build our budgets and we look at chapter seven funding, our budgets continue to grow larger than, clearly larger by hundreds of thousands larger than the chapter seventy is making up for. Rural aid has been the difference to make the state's contribution to the district. And eventually at some point, that rural aid should be being used to offset the operation budget. Cause or else the town can't keep it up. And I'm looking at this in all the small schools, um, all the schools, um, where you, you, it just doesn't, mathematically it doesn't work out, but you add rural aid in with the chapter seventy, then all of a sudden you're at a percentage of state aid where it's not great, but it's more reasonable. Right now, it's, it's not reasonable with what we get without adding rural aid. And so Shelley and I actually, we were talking about even prior to budget season about at what point do we take a risk? You know, so we, we do the risk every year for um transportation for frontier. Cause regional transportation is supposed to be, is supposed to be done a hundred percent and rarely has it been. And so we pick a number of what, what percentage, if they do cut, how low will they go? And so like eighty percent has been the number. Some schools risk as much as um will go as much as, or we've actually, sorry, the other way around. We've actually been a conservative as much as sixty percent. You know, further back when they were touching um transportation, the same kind of ideas I look at really. Can we expect to get as much this year? Or if we get slightly less, will we still get one percent? Cause it is a good point to bring up is we, if we take rural aid and we spend it here and they don't give us rural aid next year, we're down a percent right out of the block. You know, it's the same kind of thing we did with, you know, the, asking for the same thing. So that's probably like, one percent is something that we could fight as a as a school and as a town. And not that we have much more, but if we had more, if we had the full two percent, that would be
One, one of the, one of the questions, can you tell from, I assume they use the October one enrollment for their uh calculations for rural aid depending to put you in whatever, it's one of the things that go into whichever tier you're in. One is your economic situation, which I think we'll qualify for. And the other was your opposite of density, your lack of density. Okay, can you tell from our October one numbers whether we'll still qualify for the same tier in next year's rural aid calculation if they don't change the way they calculate?
I think our numbers have only gone down.
They're going down.
If they're going down.
You're, you're tier one right now. You're the
We got into tier one this year. Okay, and my question, which I think the answer to is, yes, we will qualify for tier one again, is can you tell for sure from the numbers as to whether that's gonna be the case? Cause I think you could, you ought to be able to.
I could, I could also recall, um, there's a great person that works for M A S S, I mean Mars rather. Um, that's, that's associated with regional schools. Um, Kelly, um Kelly, Kelly, um, she might, she might have a formula that we can plug it in. The other thing is, will the governor's budget have the recommendations on rural aid?
Uh, yeah, the governor's budget includes
We'll have rural aid. So the governor's budget comes out on the twenty fourth.
Have an amount for rural aid, but it won't have a, getting it up into the
Well, we'll know if they cut. So it may be adjusted based on what category it is. You're gonna need both pieces of information, but the first one is, are they fully funding it? Or even, I'm gonna guess
Funding it the same at least.
I mean, the fact they just did nine, they just did some nine C cost flows. It did not affect education, it did not affect municipalities directly. Um, so, you know, so some strategic cuttings. The question is, what is gonna be Governor Healy's mood when it comes to expanding, you know, um rural aid next year? So is it, you know, so, but if it comes in at the fifteen million again, we're gonna, well, even if we get some reduction, we're still right here, one percent. So then we'll know safely that we'll be able to apply that moving forward.
Right. I mean, we, our, our starting figure was what, low fifties?
Yes, fifty five.
Right. So, you know, as long as we stay in tier one and they don't really like, you know, chop it in half. I mean, even if, if we stay in tier one and they, you know, chop it from fifteen million down to ten, we still have got more than the thirty three thousand.
That's why I'm saying it's a safe number. That's why we picked one. We picked one percent, like, where do you start? Do you throw the whole thing at it? Really? Let's go with what the idea we had before, with one percent. And um, you know, we were talking about doing other budgets as well. Is it eventually this has to be rolled in as?
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep moving. Um, so I wanna look at revolving funds and talk about that. Um, our budget is not fully funded in the general fund. We always supplement. So these are the other funding sources we'll use next year, school choice, early childhood revolving, school lunch revolving, uh IDEA, which is a special education federal grant, and then title one. So that is an additional almost six hundred thousand. So between the general fund and the supplemental accounts that we use, we're looking at roughly four million dollars to fully cover all of the operations of the school. Which based on our, our estimated enrollment uh for next year, one hundred and seventy students, we're looking at about twenty four thousand per pupil cost. Uh, and then just some of the other accounts that we've used over the years, circuit breaker, special revolving, ESR, ESR will not have any money remaining uh after the end of this year, or at least by summer, because we may use some for summer programming. The rural aid balance for twenty four and then next year, obviously, is subject to appropriation like we just talked about. So while I'm giving you the info for next year, I also want you to have what the projections uh will be. And I like this graphic particularly because she's like peeking, like she's not quite sure and this is sort of how I feel when we're talking about revolving fund projections because there's some unknown with this and it is a projection and it is a guessing game. While school choice is probably the one that I can predict the most based on current uh enrollment numbers for revenue and expenses. The other ones really fluctuate. We don't know what enrollment for early childhood is going to be and what our tuitions is. I'm basing it based on this year's numbers. Uh, school lunch, same thing. I'm sort of going off what we're bringing in and what we're spending this year. Um, so not only is it a little bit uh scary to look at the projections and kind of play a guessing game with it, I, I think it's most important to point out that expenses are exceeding revenue in all of these accounts. You can really clearly see that. And for me, a couple of these accounts are getting to a point where I feel uncomfortable. Twenty thousand dollars left in early childhood is not a whole lot. If you have one student that you aren't anticipating needs a one-to-one that ends up needing a one-to-one, you do not have enough funds to cover that high end position. Um, so I would like to see this closer to um thirty or forty thousand at a minimum. And school choice, this is a multi-year. We've been talking about this. We've seen our numbers go down primarily because we had um some high special education claims. Those students are no longer enrolled, so we lost a significant amount of revenue here. So we're having to back off. So when I talked about the level service budget having a revolving fund adjustment of fifty thousand, this is why. Because if you add fifty thousand back onto school choice here, we're at sixty thousand left at the end of your balance next year, which is a very uncomfortable number. If we have an out of district placement, the transportation contract comes in way high. Like I said, any one-to-ones will really be in a bind where we don't have adequate funds to, to cover. So this is something that we have to keep an eye on.
And I'm really worried about the school choice never getting down to that where we were there five years ago. And so after we talk about, so we never gave the final percentage number where we'd be at if we did the
If those three components were to push through, it'd be two point eight three or two point
And it might be something where we push back.
Two point three eight percent.
So we might wanna say we wanna get that back up to three percent to go to the town or three point two, three point three to go to the town. If we're gonna take the lump to cut a position, it doesn't mean you have to go all the way down to the bottom. You might wanna say, let's save more school choice. So we're not forced to be doing that kind of reductions the following year. You understand, you understand what I'm saying? Like you know, spread your money over the several meals of the several years, so to speak. So, cause I think the town probably will have an appetite for something just over three. Rather than just say, how low can we go and just go there? And then put, you know, get more saves in school choice and so that we have that offer for other things. So just, just thought as we, those are the, the finite stuff as we make some of the major price decisions about how we can um our sets later, if we're gonna take some pain now.
And that's an easy point to view, Art, because if I'm looking at two twenty in revenues and two sixty one in expenses and saying no, a negative forty one is that you gotta get off, you gotta do better than that for where your trend line is gonna carry you. And you gotta get that number down at twenty, let's say, or or something that, you know, shows a way so that the curve is gonna bottom rather than just run into the zero.
So for me, the sixty thousand dollar reduction in staffing, while that is really hard to swallow because it is people and we're all human and we all care about each other and we certainly don't wanna let anyone go. We can't continue on the trajectory that we're at and maintain our staffing. Because next year, if expenses stay at two sixty and revenue doesn't grow, we're talking about another two percent going back on general fund. So there has to be reductions and the only place is staffing to do that. There's, there's no other extra fat um or low hanging fruit to, to cut from our budget. So um strictly looking at numbers, it makes sense to do what we're recommending and we know that there's a lot of other considerations to take in the process.
Question on school lunch? On the previous page where you listed revolving funds and grants and you showed sixty nine thousand eight hundred coming out of school lunch.
That's just for wages for staff. That, the
twenty five and that includes like major equipment and stuff like
Not equipment, it's just um consumables, actual food and product to serve. You know, if they're using anything disposable for service.
So are we running a twenty five thousand deficit in that account, like what we're doing?
So we don't have a good handle on a school lunch at the moment because we've built up our reserves so much. We've bought new equipment, we've been trying to increase food quality. We now have a float cafeteria person who fills in when someone is absent. Um, the state is pushing schools to spend their excess funds because they only want you to carry uh, I believe it is three months of your expenses as your balance and we're exceeding that. Everyone in the state is exceeding it. It's the message keeps coming out. I don't know if you're hearing it, but we're hearing it at my level that, you know, buy equipment, hire more staff, give raises.
Well, but the, to fairness to all the school districts, we didn't know what was gonna happen. So everybody sat on the money because if we were to transition back to pay lunch, all the systems have to be put back in and, you know, there would be software updates. There would be like, there would be, there's all these expenses that they were fearing and fearing that number of students who are buying lunch would then be suddenly reduced. You know what I mean? So there was, again, it makes sense why those people have money because the state's been unpredictable.
Yep. Um, so I think we are on track with uh Pat McCarthy is our new food service director. He's doing a phenomenal job with um making sure that lunch counts and breakfast counts are accurate, whereas the last couple of years with the way that things have happened between COVID and what the state is requiring, it's been a little bit more loosey goosey. So I'm starting to see where we can become more predictable with what we're spending uh and what we have coming in for revenue. Um, so we can't forever spend twenty five thousand dollar over. So there's gonna be a point where we have to look at what exactly is that. Um Sunderland at some point, I think, had, was paying some of the cafeteria staff out of general fund, not in revolving because revolving wasn't making enough money to cover everything. We've shifted that really since COVID because we've had more revenue coming in. So
Food service director being paid out of the school lunch fund now.
Yes.
That could be shifted back.
Exactly. So it, it's just another fund that we have to keep a close eye on. But having eighty thousand dollars in the school lunch account is not typical in any of our small schools. Um, I think when I first started here, all the schools, maybe if they were lucky, had ten thousand dollar surplus, which is really where you should be. You don't need to hold money. That, all of your fun money should be coming and going directly back into the program. So you know, we're okay overspending for a little while, especially as Patrick, you know, works on menu changes and training staff and, you know, trying to increase the quality of food that we're serving. And I think we'll
And I would say, when you look at those lines too, like, given a certain year, if I were to go back to the year, the, I still remember that year where I handed out pink sheets of like, like what we're gonna have to cut. If we had to make adjustments where we had every ten thousand dollar income that we had to pull from every single line item, maybe we'd look at school lunch differently and do that shift now instead of having a small kind of thing there. But I don't think it's that kind of budget year.
Like I said, we don't know what town, we don't have any idea what the town position is.
Well, now that we have a budget that's, you know, this is our first, this is public meeting. So now we can go and we can start having conversations with folks about what are they seeing on their end and and then obviously again with the governor's budget coming out and a lot more information going into next year.
I think we just have one, a couple more slides. Um, we can go quickly. I'm not gonna read through all of this. This is just historical info. The thing I wanna do point out is that our increases have been on the higher side. I think, you know, going back twenty twenty, almost fourteen percent, then budget froze. Under three, I think it's healthy. That's where all of us would like to be. Slightly over three and then the six point six three. So we're on the high end again and I just wanted us to have that info so we would
I know it's obvious, but just remember it's FY twenty four. You know, I mean, we're, we're in six in both years. You know what I mean? Usually, usually you have the projected
We don't really have a decision on it. At some point, I will add a column that shows
I just wanted to say that loud, cause I, when I read it, I was like, oh, oh, that's the year before.
Yeah.
Even, even I get, I'm just saying.
So we've talked about a lot of things. I wanna recap before we close out. Um, our budget drivers are salaries and wages, uh facilities and operations, special education costs and transportation. Um, seventy five percent of our overall budget goes to direct instruction of the students. Um seventy-five percent of our overall budget goes to direct instruction of the students. Um, and then the scenarios we're looking at, level service came in at six point three four percent. Our new requests added just shy of twenty thousand, so six point eight three is what we're looking at now as our baseline to talk about reductions. And then we presented those three options for reductions to you. Um, so next steps, going back to what just fast of what we're looking for. You know, this is the first conversation. It's a lot of information. Um, if you could concretely say, yes, let's use one percent of rural aid and yes, let's ask the town for the fifty-five thousand. In February, I'd come back with what that budget looks like. And we continue the conversation around staffing and enrollment from that point. If we're not ready to make any of those decisions, that's okay too. Yeah.
Or a straw vote or not?
A lot of info.
Sure. Yeah. Um, are we all comfortable using the rural aid money? This is basically exactly what the state intended us to do with it, operating expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um a- and putting the retirements on as a town meeting warrant item. We've, we've got lots of historical precedent for that in Sunderland. Yeah. Those are easy.
Go ahead.
And so on the other things would, so one is we'll start having conversations with the town that this is, so we can start getting a um a feeling about how they feel about um, you know, the fifty-five thousand there. Um, and then I think hearing, you know, even as we were talking about it, we had to firm up all those numbers to classify them. Even though we have the October one report, we need to do what the current one is as well there so that um that kind of thing there. I mean, we're gonna still start having more conversations about there are some different options. If you look at the different classes, just, you don't just go to the lowest. You, there might be other, there's other factors in there. Um you know, and yeah, we'll start getting more information there so that at the next meeting, if we end up going that direction and you're asking questions, we have a better plan. I suppose we should have, I guess what I'm trying to say is should we come back with a proposal of what that step would be? It may be take two months to do. I mean, but it might be the March thing, but it also, you want to be able to have
March is a public hearing.
Public hearing, you want people, you want to have public comment. If you're gonna do reductions, there should be some feedback on that.
We should know how it's going to impact students.
And there's a lot of details there because each class has a different personality, so to speak. You mean, and different needs and how those needs are remade and that kind of stuff. Um, it's, it's easier with the difference also from a larger district to a smaller, in a larger district, you're cutting on staff position. Administration goes off with it and they figure it out over the next few months. You know what I mean? Like, it's not, it's not a, you know, it's not as big things. Um, which technically as a school committee, you can also do. You could say you're gonna have to reduce by one and we have until, we have until the start of school to figure out what that's going to be based on whatever, that kind of thing. And so, um and of course, we come back to on that. So I'm just saying that out loud because it is, um, yeah, it's not easy.
I don't think by September, we'll meet again that this, town's gonna have much idea where it's, but it is. But we have to keep moving forward.
They'll have the governors for a general idea. They'll start telling us some basic numbers.
The big numbers are, you know, what they're gonna get in the two regional schools.
Right. Um, remember your, your timeline is also that you have your public hearing at the beginning of March and your votes at the end of March. You can have as many meetings you want. Your public hearing, you know, the budget.
We don't have
Budget can't go up, but it can go down after that. So you can come in with a higher budget and then still be working on. So there's still a lot of time for input and other ideas and to see other ways of sharpening our pencils if that's the direction we have to go to. But there was no vote tonight anyways on it. It's, it kind of sits and yeah, so.
And just to reiterate, like, the town will get the full line-by-line item budget. I know they want to see that. They'll get more of a narrative. Like I usually submit to you all that's, you know, paragraphed and
Yeah, yeah, but that's not, that's not from public here.
Right, but in case anyone's watching wondering, this doesn't give us a whole lot, you know, or or it gets out that this was what was discussed was not the level of detail that they want to see. We know that they have that, so I'm not that ready.
March or February.
Um, I will have probably a line-by-line for March based on the two reductions because we know we have some direction now, but the March meeting will really have the full February, because February will have more and then March will be the full package.
If you only had, right, if you only had one budget, you'd have it.
I'd have it all right now for you if I only have one budget.
All right. Thank you very much, Billy. Any other questions right now? Okay. It is late. Let's keep moving. Uh, all right. Our next agenda item is a vote about air purifiers for classrooms. Um, I am the originator of this uh agenda item. I've been asking about classroom air purifiers for about two years now. Uh, they are recommended by the CDC. Um, prior to the pandemic, there was plenty of evidence that air quality in classrooms um has a major impact on learning. Um, that when you have clean air in classrooms, test scores go up pretty significantly. Um, and now we are still in a pandemic. Um, they can uh really meaningfully reduce transmissions of COVID in addition to removing allergens and asthma triggers and wildfire smoke. Um, right now, none of the classrooms in this building are meeting uh CDC or ASHRAE or LAMP standards for air exchanges. So Plan B, according to the bodies, those um advisory bodies is to use air purifiers. They just plug into the wall um to keep cleaning the air. Uh, this has to be a school committee vote because various can't decide to put them into just one building. He'd have to decide to do it for all of the buildings. That's a much bigger budget item, but we can vote it for this building. Um, uh, so I'm asking for us to vote for this, um, not only for health and learning for everybody, but also as an equity measure for people who've got medically vulnerable people in the community who are still at really high risk of severe outcomes from catching COVID. Um, the air purifiers will not prevent all transmissions in classrooms. Uh, per CDC data, they would prevent about two out of every five. That would happen. So that's two out of every five people who won't miss five plus days of school, who won't be risking long-term complications from catching COVID. And it completely stops two continuing transmission chains through the community, which helps to protect medically vulnerable people. Um, so I guess I will make a motion and then we can ask for budget information from various on this. Um, I, I make a motion that we direct the superintendent to procure and supply as many air purifiers as are needed to outfit every classroom appropriately and instruct staff to have them running when students are present.
I'm second.
Do we know what this will cost?
So it depends on what what the um air exchange rate you want. Okay. And so the, if you're looking for five air exchanges per hour, the current units that are in our building can't, besides the one that the one model that's in the library right now, there's another one somewhere else in the building into a thousand square foot room, which are, we're, our classrooms are just around nine hundred and, nine hundred and change. That is the only unit that can be do an entire room um of that size to get basically, we're around between two and three. So I'm gonna round down because I think we're closer to two on most, in most air exchanges in rooms. Um, and again, that's air exchanges before, if you were watching this before, doors being open and windows being open or those kind of things. Um, and those units can do that if they're on high. And so there, there is and this is where Jessica and I had some conversations on this where it gets more, it gets a little more complicated than ordering and unboxing and just putting them into classrooms because the unit itself, in order to do that size space, um, again, the particular one that's in the, I just wonder everybody, do I keep pointing there? I'm not pointing at you, Megan. Is a five hundred dollar unit. And it would have to be on high in order to do the classroom. And when it's on high, it's loud. And so you know, and we want to even turn it on so you can even hear how high loud it is when it's on high. And so if you're going to run them on low, then you need to have multiple units. And so this is kind of where it's like, it's more than, and then the the, once we buy those, then we're gonna do budget for filters as such as well. So that's what I'm saying. That's why I asked Jessica, I said, I'm not going to make the, the change in this because it's not um, while air filtration is important and we do have some within this building, the complete overhaul to go to CDC standard that they changed this summer in the midst of things is very difficult to do, very expensive for us to do. And so right now, there's eleven classrooms that would need, but if we use the ones we have and we use the ones, there's three different models that we have currently in the building that are being used. There, there are, um there are ones that, it basically goes by price, to be honest with you. The ones that were, uh, we have these things called MedFly. They're really, they only do about three hundred square feet. They really are, they are in classrooms. And I imagine, um, when we bought them, the idea was getting something is better than nothing. And if it's near teacher, they may have been for a teacher accommodation. If it's near a teacher's desk, that particular area is gonna have more air filtration than an entire classroom. And so um, again, going back to depending on how they're used and such, um, you're looking at five hundred dollars a classroom. Right now, there's eleven classrooms that would need them. Um, and that would be using the other ones that are mid-range at two fifty. You're not really getting five air exchanges for kind of that we're getting five air exchanges. Um, cause even on high, um, they would be a couple hundred square feet short. Um, this isn't talking about other larger areas that would need even larger units such as the this room really should have something even bigger than that unit that's over there. The cafeteria and the gymnasium would have to have, you know, industrial sized units that would be several thousand dollars. Um, and so that's what I'm saying, right? We could put the simple unit in each classroom. But I just want to be clear, if the vote is that we want to have CDC level air exchange, it's gonna, I'm gonna have to get a kind of report together to, to see exactly what that would entail, what kind of unit would need, would they recommend for each classroom? We also have an issue with wiring in classrooms. There's only so many outlets. We talked about that. Um, uh, before we were talking about adding electricity to the building, that there's only so many different places. So placement of them is gonna be limited to either one of, I, you might help me out here, Ben, because I don't know that in some classrooms, one of the building or under the room or the other end of the room. Um
There, there's outlets mid-wall in each, in each classroom, but it's you know, you're not putting it in the center of the classroom.
Okay.
Right.
Right. And that's just another factor that's, it's, it's in there. So, um, yeah, so basically if the committee wants to direct to get the and I imagine there's other units out there. This is one that was, this actual one that was in the library was donated by someone who put a lot of time and care into picking, we consider the most robust unit, um, the new wave. Yeah, again, is maybe, right? You know, again, it's a five hundred dollar unit. So you're talking about eleven rooms, if you wanted to just, that's just classrooms. Um, fifty-five hundred dollars. But what I'm, I'm just saying is I'm not giving you CDC level air exchanges. And so, you know, if the, if the vote is to put air purifiers in every, make sure there's one in every classroom that can increase the rates, I would recommend that we do the five hundred dollar unit. Um, I think you're, you're gonna get, you know, more bang for your buck, even on the lower speeds, you're gonna get more exchange, but you're not getting five air changes per hour.
All right.
Now, you're not getting the three added to the two to get you five air exchanges per the three, the two that your classrooms already are doing.
Unless it's on high.
And that's on high. But even on low, so I'm just like that's kind of, it, it gets to semantics, but it's also like if the, if the district is saying that this is the goal we want to do, maybe getting the air purifiers, those particular models in first and then working toward other goals can be a longer planning process. But I'm just saying that you can't just buy those units, put them in and then have five air exchanges per hour. You're gonna have to get a larger unit. Um, and it just can be a little bit more to do, there's more to do around.
It's a little silly that the units are rated by square footage when you're talking about volume, so you need the third dimension. It doesn't account for ceiling height.
Right. And they, well, they, they say, they, they do say it's very nine-foot ceiling or
Oh, do they?
And, and this is when I'm looking at Amazon specs, you know what I mean? So I imagine there's other specs where you can go directly to the company, but they use volume of a large room is usually a household. You know what I mean? So then there's classroom grade ones and they, they go up in price significantly. Um, from the household market ones to whatever, um, you know, and
What, what's the, uh, what's the anticipated source of funds or whatever we do?
Right now, the only funds that you have available, um, it's either school choice or the, the remaining of the rural aid.
Well, I was gonna suggest another one, which I'm not sure if, did, what, if there's any money left in it or how much if there is some, is the, uh, the fund that the, uh, that the school has access to, the representative gift which the gentleman made to the school to improve things at the school and, which I know a lot has been spent in the library and other stuff. I have no idea how much it's been spent or how much. Seems to me that something, one of the, one of the comments from school committee members when that was presented here was that uh, hope that it would affect positively as many kids as possible.
My pushback on that would be only that Ben's worked with teachers and stuff. There's a kind of like a committee that's kind of been owning that funds for us to swoop in and take it without their permission. I mean, we can ask their permission to use it.
That's what I mean. It might be, there certainly might be a process that, you know, would be you know, the proper way to go about doing it. I just thought I'd bring it up because thinking maybe, well, then consider this.
Right. I mean, I'd rather, I would rather use rural aid rather than going after that gift money.
Okay.
You know what I mean? If you're gonna, you know, that money is, that money is there right now. You know, it's, you know, it's kind of waiting for its next
I think there's around twenty thousand dollars left in that. And, um, a lot of those monies have been spent towards, um, steam-related um, projects or hands-on learning experiences.
Yeah, I like how you're thinking, but my recollection of sort of the spirit of that gift is that it should be for fun things for the kids. Air purifiers would be considered fun.
That's what keeps them helping and scoring.
They're important, which is not fun.
So, a- again, I think the other question, um, are, are we looking to have an air purifier in every space where there is a person in the building? Right? So including all offices, all classrooms, and the cafeteria, the gymnasium a- as well. And I don't know what the price of the industrial ones would be. I would think you would you know, where they spend the majority of their time. You're not gonna make anything perfect. Okay, you're not gonna get, you know, you could always, if you don't walk away thinking, oh gee, we could have, you know, somehow done a better job, well, you really got too much money, you know, or something. And, and so I'm not saying it's a compromise, but it's like, how do you get the best bank to book it? Best bank to book it to use it where the kids are, which is in the classrooms. Okay. And then the other thing I would say is that my judgment of, you know, does something raise the odds that we're gonna have healthy kids, you know, more so than otherwise. Um, and actually, you know, how do we judge whether it does that? To me, making that judgment is a little bit different from just, well, how many air exchanges do we get? Which to me is sort of a number that somebody tosses out there and it's sort of like, well, does that mean that if, if five is what you're supposed to have, if four and a half is no good? You know, and I look and say, well, if we're getting two and we up that to three or four, that's pretty cool. Okay. And don't go feeling you gotta, gotta go, you know, go through a bunch of other hoops. Okay, trying to get to this five standard. And we don't know what the difference between five and four is a big deal or not, but you know, if we're doing something that is doable and affordable and we can get installed fairly quickly without a whole lot of rigmarole, that's not gonna make so much noise that the kids are gonna have trouble paying attention to their learning, which to me is actually a big deal. Um, we ought to be doing something like that. And not worrying about whether we meet the private exchanges standard.
It's still harm reduction.
It's still better.
And I would think that the sound, I mean, the freezing fans in the warm weather in the classroom, the sound of that I would imagine would be equal or less on an air purifier than to like a box fan. Um.
And I look at something like where I think there is the same, would just be put in there something that's gonna improve things, okay? With anything you put in, you're not gonna sure how much, you know, and then if you put in something, make sure the air in there is just perfect, but then the kids have gotta go in the cafeteria, you know, and gym and whatever. Gym and whatever, and it's like. You know, we do something, and I think it will help, and it's still gonna just have to wait and see. My, you know, and I don't know how we. Could motion out, but I'm not, I, I still have to confirm what the wording is, but how you want it, but. I mean, is that a reasonable way to move forward?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just add, um, if we're talking about it in terms of COVID transmission, the highest risk activities are yelling and singing, so I would make sure the music room is included. Maybe brings us up to meeting twelve of them.
Cause there is both yelling and singing.
So, can we? How do you want the motion to read?
Um, instruct the superintendent to, y'all can help me with this, we can redo it if we need to.
Instruct the administration.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
To. Procure, I mean, do, do we need to save the mall?
No, just, um.
If I just to install, to install, uh. Uh, air purifiers in all the classrooms, especially music room.
And instruct staff they should be running when students are present.
Is that an okay thing to have in there?
Mm-hmm. Really, you can just tell the children they should be running, and then they'll be running.
Yeah.
Install air purifiers. In classrooms. Music room. And instruct staff to use them. That enough? I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll send that.
You ready to vote? Let me try the town first.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? We're there, thanks, everybody.
Thank you for pushing, for, for bringing it up, and. Could it, it makes a difference in the health, that's.
And my understanding is that there are. Some kids who experience mold sensitivity in this building, we are built on a swamp, we're on Swampfield Drive, you could throw a baseball into the marsh. Hopefully, this will be helpful. All right, moving on, committee and chair reports, I've got nothing I need to report, nothing.
One quick thing, just from town capital planning meeting, we submitted, uh, three items. Uh, the last year's green van stuff, the. Uh. Building, uh, the Siemens, new Siemens plan with Deerfield at the same time, and then also electricity upgrades, I think. Um, and then a fourth one. And then the fourth one, which I see was also put in for a bunch of the mini splits, okay? My sense that, how, you know, if where we were in our discussion this evening, which is very preliminary, but it's got sort of the. You know, here's the amount of money available, here's the amount of things we're asking for, is that. I'd be real surprised if we didn't get the first three without any problem at all, okay, and I would. Think it would be reasonably likely we were getting some, at least something on the, on the, uh, mini split thing.
It is.
Okay, I was getting no, you know, we just went through the list, so on, and, and I was getting no, no objection to any of that. And, and having the town's support for the capital override, obviously, is what's made the difference, because we have. A little bit of funds in excess of what we had prior year, by a little bit. So, it'd be nice to. And then the other thing is that the ARCA, uh, money needs to be committed by the end of December. There's a hundred and fifty thousand still uncommitted to the town. Who knows what's gonna come up, but at some point, you know, I was thinking, well, gee, you know, whether we gotta, you know, get projects on now, and, uh. You know, if, if, if there is something that, you know, is a reason to ask for, for some, for, for ARCA money. And at least, you know, bring it out.
We'd use it to pay the employee separation costs.
We could use it for that.
Hmm.
That's what I would have said, didn't it?
Conwy did that, uh, last year, right? Conwy had four retirements that had to be paid out.
Okay.
They used a good chunk of their ARCA for that.
Okay. So anyway, I'm just passing this on. And they want to know on the, that something like ninety thousand you put into the mini splits, what percentage of that represented the amount to do all the. Rooms that were initially planned, I said it was.
I didn't pull up. I think I have to get you back for it. I probably just come to one of the meetings, it's for that, just to talk about that, it's, it's a, to understand the rebate and.
Isn't it like nine thousand per room, though?
It is nine thousand.
Yeah, we, this was eighty-one thousand for nine rooms.
But they need to like upgrade it, too.
Right.
You gotta do the upgrade first.
Right.
Yeah, I just.
So are you asking what percentage of the building that?
What percentage of the, of the, of the eventual, does this represent, you know, is there another eighty-one thousand come before we finish the job?
We can get you, there's a map, we can get you the map, I.
And I told, uh, I guess, and I told them that, and the other thing that'd be useful was, I told them that in the different elementary schools, there are. Some rooms that they are truly not to do. I believe you told me that, maybe I was wrong, or, or maybe they just haven't gotten around to it, or whatever, but it's real nice to be able to have something also that explains what the rest of the towns are doing. Because, you know, if they're doing stuff, then you're being left behind, you know, that's a reason to get on board.
Right, I mean, we prioritized, you know, working with the building principal about what costs, especially what costs in the summer. And then usually younger, sometimes it's younger students, especially education students who, A, are here in the summer and have less ability to regulate their heat. Um, so, you know, but we put logic into it.
I'd be real surprised if we didn't get at least some number.
Okay.
For work for, for.
Didn't you submit Ben's full plan with our requests?
They have it here, the, as, as of November, our initial look was that we would need around twenty-four or twenty-five total units.
And if you, and if you have nine in there, okay.
Phase one would have been nine units.
Right. Okay. Anyway, there'll be a need for, there'll be, it could, it would be useful to have. You know, your presence or your, you know, more information to, when, when the time comes. To help, help move that along.
Bless you.
And that's, that's all I need to say for now, so.
Great, thanks. Any other committee report? We have no collaborative report, superintendent report.
Just an update that the old tank work began this week. Um. I don't know if they, they can clear the snow, and then they're gonna put in the surface fencing.
Happened, fence was brought yesterday, um, some digging Friday, tomorrow.
Okay.
Possibly, yeah. The town tank is in.
The town take is in, and it was back and forth regarding the town tank, those of you, or, may have heard some of that, um. They recommended that we go with a larger temporary tank, um, there were conversations with Jeff Kravitz about it. And so on, forth, forth, and they really wanted us to sharpen our pencils and not go that route. And just go with more filling of the temporary tank. Yeah, we're learning a lot about tank stuff, um, you know, that there is, there's a whole nother math to it as well, regarding how much fuel is in the current tank. Where are you going to pump that fuel, and how much fuel you don't pump out is left over, and how much of the cost of that is to actually dispose of it per gallon? And so, if we had a larger temporary tank, it's all of a math game, how much fuel do you have at the time, can you do all that, and so. I don't know if we made the right call on that, it's, it's gonna be five hundred dollars one way or the other, um, that we, you know, um, but we weren't gonna get into a push and pull with. The town or where they wanted us to kind of not, we already did one, um, change order on something else, uh, within the project. So we didn't do it on that one, but it's just interesting, these small details as you go into the projects, like. There's good fuel in the tank, and then to a certain level, and then you get to the bottom of sludge. There's sludge in all of our tanks in all of our homes, and so you only fill a certain capacity, and so, and then you gotta pay to remove that fuel, suck that fuel out, and. It was toxic, because you know, it's diesel, and our town trucks could run on diesel, and so they, you know, they've been doing a lot of different conversations about, it's just interesting. But anyway, so that's, that's, so that's taking, that project's taking off. Um, we are being, I sent out a superintendent's report, just the other highlight is that, um, the tier-focused modern review is occurring next week. Um, you know, basically, every three years, they come and look at our special education civil rights, to make sure we're in compliance with the federal. And state regulations around that, and so, um, we'll get a report back in sixty days after that visit, um. Business days was like ninety days, to let us know where we need to, areas we need to fix up. And so, they work with you on that, it's not a gotcha, they kind of say like, you know, when they leave an idea of what you gotta fix. Um, right now, we're looking pretty good within the audit, um, seeing, we're not seeing a lot of areas that we're worried about.
Okay, question? Thank you. Uh, we have reached the end of the agenda, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
You make a motion? Last step in.
All in favor? Four and zero, uh, adjourned at eight twenty-two.